I'd like to call to order the Dallas City Council for Monday, September the 4th, 2023, 7:00. Before we get started, I have a message here I want to read to you. There's been discussion recently in the news and social media regarding the potential development of a homeless shelter on property in Dallas by Church at the Park. The development that could be under consideration could require a conditional use permit to allow the shelter to be located in an industrial zone. A conditional use permit application, if filed, would be addressed through the land use process, which includes the opportunity for public comment and testimony at public hearings that would be held for that purpose, and all public comment and testimony concerning the project must be presented to those land use hearings. City Council will not receive public comment on the subject of the proposed project at this council meeting. Public comment on homelessness in general will be received, but comments on a particular project that may be the subject of the land use application must be reserved for public hearings on any application that may be filed. That, the first item on the agenda, is roll call.
Council President Schilling?
Here.
Counselor Adams?
Here.
Counselor Bariantos?
Here.
Counselor Briggs?
Here.
Counselor Fitzgerald?
Here.
Counselor Jantz?
Here.
Counselor Shane?
Here.
Counselors Collins and Verden are excused.
Okay, thank you. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next is introductions, recognitions, proclamations. Are there any?
Nothing from staff.
Okay. Next thing is a public hearing. Declaring a dangerous building at 573 East Ellendale, space 443. I now declare this public hearing open at 7:04 PM. This is a public hearing to consider declaring 573 East Ellendale Avenue, space number 43, a dangerous building as defined by Dallas City Code 8.400-8.455. Does the staff have a report?
I do, Mayor. So, this is a building that came to the attention of city staff through a complaint to our code services division. They went out and investigated the property and found several issues, you know, with the building's condition and its just overall state of affairs at the building, looked at remedies for, you know, getting the building, you know, properly put back into order and found that really this, there's enough concerns there and the possibility that it could be, at the time it was vacant, still is vacant, but there was a, maybe a risk of it being occupied by a new tenant. And so, in order to not have that be the case and have someone go into this building as an occupant, we're pursuing a dangerous, the dangerous building ordinance. As you'll see, there are attached to the report the definitions of what constitutes a dangerous building. Staff have pulled out the particular issues that filler met. We've also included photos of the property, so you're able to see it. Council was welcome, according to the code, to go and do your own investigation and look at the building. It currently has a perimeter fence around it so that no one can go in and out. Staff believe that there is thresholds that have been met to call this building a dangerous building, and we're working with the property owner currently to get it removed. You'll notice there was an email at your desk tonight. We received this after the council agenda went out. We received it earlier today, actually, at 3:38 PM. It's from the owner of the property, Susan Daniel, and she said in her email that she's contracted with professional abatement contracting LLC to demolish and remove the home from space 43 in the Dallas Mobile Home Village, which is the subject property of the public hearing. The demolition procedure is scheduled to begin tomorrow, December 5th, and to be completed sometime thereafter.
Do we have a copy of that?
Everyone should have a copy of this at your desk. Do you not have copies of this? It was...
No.
Not everyone has it? Just me?
No.
No.
Never mind. I misunderstood. I have a copy of this email.
Can always read it as a record.
Right.
It's in here.
No, that's an earlier one.
That's an earlier version.
Okay.
So, this was an email that I received earlier today.
She's giving us a date.
And I've read it into the record. So, you all know that that's the intention of the property owner, is to start the abatement of that under her own desire, starting tomorrow. So, what staff would recommend is to continue with the recommendation for the council to declare the building a dangerous building, direct the city attorney to prepare a resolution, which would then order the abatement of the building. If the property owner abates the building between now and January 2nd, when you would, you know, hear and look at that resolution, then we just won't simply bring the resolution to you because the abatement will have been completed. If for some reason the abatement's not completed by January 2nd, we can then bring the resolution. You can order the abatement, and that would give the property owner probably an additional 30 days or whatever stated in the resolution to then complete that process. So, there's really no harm in directing the city attorney to prepare that resolution, declaring the building a dangerous building, just to ensure that the abatement is completed within a reasonable amount of time. So, that's staff's recommendation.
Does the council have any questions of staff?
So, I have a question.
Okay.
Definition to abatement is to not only make sure there's nobody living in it, but they're going to remove it, correct?
Right, yeah. So, abatement would be the demolition and the removal of the building.
And there isn't anybody living in it now?
There's no one in it right now, and the demolition would require a permit, an alternate permit from the city.
Actually, I do have a question. Let me think of it. In the ordinance, there are 21 different ways listed in which a building can be dangerous. This isn't meant to hold anything up, just disappointing information. Is there anything in the staff report that speaks to which of those 21 things?
Yeah, it's on page five of your packet. It's items four, five, and 10.
Okay.
Really speaking to whenever a door, aisle, passageway, stairway, or other means of exit is not of sufficient width or size, or is not so arranged, has to provide safe and adequate means of exit in case of fire or panic. Another one related to the same effect, just being worn or warped or loose, torn. And then finally, whenever any portion thereof is racked, wrapped, buckled, or settled to such an extent that the walls or the structural portions of material have materially less resistance to winds or earthquakes than is required in the case of similar new construction. You'll see in the photos that there are several places where walls are starting to buckle. The stairs going in and out of the building are non-existent and damaged, you know, beyond repair would have to be replaced. So, those are the issues that staff have cited as putting the building dangerous.
No other questions by the council? Does anyone wish to comment at this time? Remember to please state your name and address for the record, and you have a limit of three Apparently, nobody wants to testify. So, after all testimony, which I'm going to close the public hearing and allow the council to deliberate on the matter. Yes?
As the city manager said, there's no downside to going forward with this now, and it provides us with the tool if we need it later on, so it looks like a slam dunk.
There's a recommended motion.
Recommended motion.
I would entertain a motion that the council declare the building located at 573 East Ellendale Avenue, space 43, a dangerous building, and direct the city attorney to prepare a resolution ordering the building to be abated by the property owner within 30 days of the day of the order.
So, move.
Move to second. Any more discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Carries unanimously. Okay, next is public comment. Public comment, please provide us with your name and address for the record. You have up to three minutes. It's your turn to talk and ours to listen. You are responsible for the content, even if it was written by someone else. Please direct all comments to the mayor. The mayor will refer to staff for readily available information or for follow-up as needed. Defamatory or libelous comments will not be accepted. Distractions take attention from the speaker. The audience, city council members, and city staff are asked to focus on the speaker during their time by being respectfully quiet. I do have one person that has signed up, and that's Joseph Biesel. Come on up to the table. And for the record, state your name and address.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thanks for having me. My name is Joe Biesel. I live at 335 Southeast Davis Street. The reason why I'm here, I'm scratching my head about these water bills. I made copies for you to look at, but from August through November of this year. I'm originally from the East Coast, so I've only been here four years. Although I love the town, I love it as soon as I got here. The way it's being billed, it's not really clear. It's not really transparent because, and I'll give you an example. If there was one person, and I thought two of my homes by myself, and with only one person there, according to this water bill, I would have to pay $2,100 worth of, in other words, three units of water if I wasn't even there. That doesn't seem fair to me. Now, I'm not asking for a rate increase. I'm not asking for a rate reduction. I'm asking for another way of coming about how the bill's prepared because right now, I was away in, excuse me, the end of August till, from August 23rd until September the 4th, I was gone for two weeks out of my country. My water bill stayed the same. That made me scratch my head because if my water bill stayed the same, the two weeks that I was at the house, I would have had to use twice as much water in those two weeks. It doesn't make sense to me. This is basically why I'm here. I don't have an explanation for it. I hope you do.
Do you have who should he contact?
So, I've talked with Mr. Biesel, and we've looked closely at his daily water consumption. You know, he and I mentioned, talked on the phone earlier today, and for one of the days where he was gone, his neighbor would come over and water his lawn. Is that correct, Mr. Biesel?
Yeah, I just spoke to him before I came, and there was no way I used 350 gallons worth of water that day either.
Yeah, so that's what the, that's what the meter registered on that day, as we talked about. And so, there's, and then also, when you have a water bill just for the benefit of the council, I don't know how that works, we will always round, so we base it on units, which is 750 gallons of water. And so, you know, say in the first month, you use, you know, your three units plus another 600 gallons of water, we will charge you the base rate of just the three units, right? But that 600 gallons will be applied towards your next bill because you're only 150 gallons away from triggering the next unit. And so, your meter reading would then, for the next month, assume those 600 gallons that you already used in the previous month. So, you get to the first unit of usage faster in the next month than you did, say, in the first month where you had to use all 750 to get to that first unit. So, and I talked to Mr. Biesel about that as well, and there's just times where you can use less water in one month than you did in the previous month and still get billed for the same number of units, just depending on where your previous month's billing cycle ended and where you start on the next one and where you end there. So, there's some nuances like that as well. Looking at Mr. Biesel's bills and his daily water consumption, he's really consistent, you know, in terms of the amount of water he uses. And so, you know, we looked at that, and so he spoke with me about that, and there doesn't appear to be any errors in the billing. We could talk more about the 350 gallons on that day if you feel that that was an error, but that's what was read. So, I'm happy to follow up with him afterwards.
Okay, so do you want him to contact your office?
Yeah, we can follow up and talk more about your specific bill there.
It's just, I'm having a hard time swallowing the fact that if I went away for a month, I'm still going to get charged for 2,100 gallons of water. Each unit's 750 gallons, I'm just saying roughly 2,100 gallons. If I was away for the whole month, I'm still going to get charged for 2,100 gallons? Am I allowed to put a tank in my backyard so I can save all that water that I'm not getting? I don't know.
That makes sense to me, too, but...
That's, well, that's what I'm saying. I'm not looking for a rate reduction. I'm not looking for a rate increase either. If, my dad was a math teacher. He had a master's degree in education. If you drew a graph of the current system of the way it's being built, there's going to be a line going off the graph. If you take another graph and charge per gallon, which the meters are already set up for that anyway, if you charge per gallon, you keep lifting the rate per gallon, somewhere along the line, it's going to meet. There's two lines on different graphs. Somewhere, it's going to meet, and that's what you can do. Because right now, it's, it's just not clear because I pity the guy that's living and by himself. He's paying for 2,100 gallons of water. He's not even using. There's no way one person's going to use 2,100 gallons of water in a month unless he's got a pool in his backyard.
Well, contact the city manager's office, and he'll sit down with you and try to explain it further for you.
Okay.
Thank you.
And so, just to talk to Mr. Biesel's last comment there, I'll just explain what the base rate is and how that's calculated. So, you know, again, we assume, our methodology for calculating water bills, we assume a base rate, and that's to pay for the cost of the overall of the system, right? And then anything above the base rate. So, we assume every water user gets billed for three units of water regardless of whether or not they use it. And so, then for any water that's used in excess, so if you are a customer that uses more water than that, you know, you have, you know, many people in the household, you have, you know, large lawn areas or, you know, a pool or something that you fill up. In those instances where you use more water, you're then billed for your actual usage, you know, above that three units. The three units are assumed in your usage as well. So, if you use five units of water, you get billed for those two additional units above the, above the three.
Yes, move on.
Yeah, that's trying to add something. Would it, would it be too hard to charge by the gallon?
I don't know. You have to talk to the city manager.
That way, it's more transparent because then you know how many gallons of water you use. Because again, if I wasn't home for months, I'm still being charged for 2,100 gallons of water. I wanted it in my backyard then.
Yeah, so as we, as we, as we talked about with that, what that takes is a change in the methodology of the council, and that's something that if the council wants to pick up, they can, they can talk about that at a committee and bring to the council for review.
I would love for them to look into it. You know, like I said, I'm not asking for a rate reduction. I mean, I'm fine paying what I'm paying. It's just when you look at your bill and you're gone for two weeks and you're using the same amount of water, it's like, you know, you start thinking of leaks. This is a brand new house. Well, I was like, oh, still no, no leaks involved.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Anybody else want to speak? Is everybody on the phone? Okay, we'll move on. Next item on the agenda is a consent agenda, and that improves the November 20, 2023 work session meeting minutes, the approved November 20, 2023 city council meeting minutes, and the cancellation of the December 18th, 2023 city council meeting. Anything you want to remove from the consent agenda? Not an annotation motion.
So, move second.
Move to second. Any more discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Passes unanimously. Next is reports or comments from the mayor and the city, and the city council members. This is a quiet group. Well, we had a good time Saturday night in the rain. We lit the Christmas tree up downtown, and of her comments, this reminds me of New York City, because of the tree lighting thing and the choir singing and stuff on a very small scale, of course, but it was a good time by all, and a lot of people showed up. I drove down to get an early park install and found the best place to park was in front of my house. So, there were a lot of people around town walking around and a lot of choir singing, and it was, it was a good time by all, so, yes.
Yeah, I second everything that you said, and between the tree itself and the magnificent job decorating it that they did, I think that's just about the best tree I've seen down there in all the time I've been here. That is one nice tree we've got this year.
I won't take full credits. I did have help counting down my granddaughter, one of my granddaughters, my son, and Santa helped me count down. So, it was, it was a good thing. Anything else? Somebody have anything else to say? Reports from city manager and staff.
So, just to follow up on the public comment we received today, you know, if there's a desire or interest by the council to look at our methodology and, and rates and how, how that's billed, it's a pretty lengthy, long conversation, but something worth exploring, staff recommend doing, starting that conversation in the public works committee meeting, which will begin having those again, I think we might have one in December, then certainly again next year. So, if that's something you want to explore, at least learn a little bit more, you know, how we arrived at the base rate decision, where our current methodology is, we'd be happy to have that conversation.
I'd like to see.
Yeah, very much.
And also a question. I want to make sure I'm not misinterpreting what I heard. We charge for three units whether they're used or not, right? Okay. Yeah, I think we ought to have that conversation.
Okay, we'll move on to first reading ordinances. There are none. Second reading of ordinances, ordinance number 1889.
All right, take your time. This is an ordinance amending Dallas City Code Section 3.816 relating to street trees.
I declare ordinance number 1889 to have passed a second reading. We'll now place it for its final passage. The secretary will call a roll.
Counselor Jantz?
Yes.
Counselor Shane?
Yes.
Counsel President Schilling?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Bariantos?
Yes.
Counselor Briggs?
Yes.
Counselor Fitzgerald?
Your ordinance number 1889 to have passed. Resolutions, resolution number 3518.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution approving changes in rates for refuse and recycling collection service and related services and repelling resolution number 3495. I will note that Exhibit 1 reflects the direction from the council the last time you looked at this resolution, which this, this exhibit just reflects the 5.4% rate increase and does not include weekly yard debris and recycling. We did include for comparison on attachment B, starting on page 42 of the agenda, includes the weekly yard debris and recycling with the 5.4%, just so you can see the difference between the two. But if you were to approve the resolution as it's written with Exhibit 1, you would be approving a 5.4% rate increase across residential, commercial, and industrial rates, but not including the additional cost for weekly yard debris and recycling.
You have heard the reading of this resolution. Is there any discussion?
So, is the additional yard debris discussion going to happen?
Yes, so once, we wanted to, I wanted to make sure this resolution was passed, and then I'll reach out to our public services, letting them know what the council decided on that, and then start to solicit the additional information that was recommended to be requested, particularly what size, you know, bins our residential customers are using, you know, the vault, just what, the numbers on that. So, the raw numbers of each residential customer who's using what size bins, so it'll give me a better idea of how customers can, you know, potentially reduce bin sizes or not and stuff like that. So, before you make a decision on that.
Okay.
So, we'll have that conversation, probably take that to the admin committee in January.
Any more discussion? Secretary will call a roll, please.
Counselor Shane?
Yes.
Counsel President Schilling?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Bariantos?
Yes.
Counselor Briggs?
Yes.
Counselor Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Counselor Jantz?
Yes.
I declare resolution number 3518 to pass by unanimous vote. The next thing on our agenda is the executive session. The Dallas City Council will now meet in an executive session. The executive session is held pursuant to ORIS 192.660 subsection 2 subsection I, which allows the council to meet in an executive session to review and evaluate the employment related performance of the chief executive officer of any public body. Representatives of the news media and designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All other members of the audience are asked to leave the room. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any of the deliberations during the executive session, except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No decision will be made in the executive session. At the end of the executive session, we will return to open session, and we'll welcome